The date is Wednesday, December 6, 2023. The time is 7:00 PM. Please join me in Pledge Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record tonight, it's all five regular members will be voting tonight. Moving on to the consideration of the regular meeting, consideration of minutes of the regular meeting of November 1st. Any discussion, any comments, any corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the minutes from the regular meeting on November 1st, 2023 be accepted as submitted.
Second?
Second.
Call for vote. Dick? Nick?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Stand.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, going on to old business. Application A 18, 12.2, 32 Barnes Road, Roland Industries, bond release?
Not ready to go forward.
You said they're not?
Not, not.
Okay. All right. Application A 23, 10.1, North Main Street Extension in Memorial Cemetery. This was granted an administration approval. Friday?
Yes.
Granted administration approval on the 22nd. Went over this with Erin and wanted to get this work done. They got it cleaned up before the ground froze.
And I will report they started this week and it'll be finished by Friday.
I would have thought that would have been done already, the way they were moving. Okay. Application A 18, 1.2, 801 North Main Street, North Colony Road and 6 Beaumont Road, Patens Brook. I am the Walrus LLC, request for a bond release. Microphone.
Who are you?
Sigrid Gadwa for Reema Ecological Services. And the memo on this year's work and the request was sent six weeks ago or so. I have copies of them.
Okay, you've got to use the microphone, they can't pick you up.
Okay, I have copies if that would be convenient, if you have them, don't have it at hand what I submitted six weeks ago.
Erin, do we have an environmental planners' report on this?
Not a current one, I've written several over the years, but you got their report about six weeks ago. We discussed it.
It was passed out at the last meeting, not six weeks ago. The last report was passed out at the last meeting.
What's the date on your report, Sigrid?
November 1st.
November 1st?
Yeah.
Happens to be their meeting.
Oh, okay, all right. And, no, I don't have a report. I do need feedback from the commission as to what, we discussed it a little bit last time, what you're looking for, because it falls way short of what was approved six years ago, seven years ago now. So I need some direction as to...
What is your suggestion?
Well, I believe it was the last meeting, I suggested people drive by and kind of take a look.
Okay, but what's your suggestion, what should be done there?
I don't know what to say because it needs, if you don't maintain this site, this corridor, it will go to rack and ruin, it will go to weeds, okay? It really needs to be maintained such that the native plantings get to dominate over the invasives and not vice versa. It needs to be babied over the years, it needs to be maintained. And because the original plantings, they're not, it doesn't look like it was supposed to. So consequently, there are other plantings and a lot of invasive came in and a lot of things are shorter than they would be by now. A lot of trees were taken down by, saplings were taken down by mistake. It needs constant, I don't know how to ensure the maintenance ongoing.
Okay, Sigrid.
Can I just make a quick presentation?
Please, but make sure it's with a microphone.
Let me also give the, who are the actual members? At this point, the site has half a dozen very healthy, thriving trees. They did not have...
You gotta use the microphone.
They did not have dieback from herbicide application, which is a real risk if you do heavy treatment in a forested area. There's a dense shrub stratum of sumac and also lots of bushy, shrub-like box elder, as well as a couple of box elder maple trees. Box elder is actually a great native tree and bush. Underneath the box elder, it's very shady. There's also a lot of native river grape and fox grape growing over the knotweed, which is still present between these native things, but it's not dominant anymore, it's like 20%. And I think, and on the ground layer, we have a real problem with an invasive that is not our fault. It came in after the plan was made, it's mugwort, it arrived via water. It was deposited by floodwaters and it's competed. It's established itself in a number of areas. But there is a very exciting, persisting wildflower. I don't know if you know bloodroot, it's a beautiful, delicate spring wildflower that was on the northern slope. There was a big stand of it and it's still there and it's doing well. And we did the four times, three or four times a year cuttings of the knotweed, but we also went in and pulled and trimmed and weeded and fostered native plants and planted shrubs, like the cranberry viburnum and the silky dogwood and, you know, the various planted shrubs. And we've had a good black raspberry patch developing over the bloodroot that was on the ground, the wildflower on the ground layer. And in terms of the wildflower plantings, several of them were outcompeted over last winter, last spring by mugwort. But we have a lot of, what, Uppatorium rugosum is what it used to be called, it's also called snake root. That has thrived and taken off. And there's a lot of rosa rugosa, I mean, they're not rosa rugosa, there's a lot of saladego rugosa, just the common goldenrod and a common aster are also common. So I think that the, we actually, the tall natives, namely the sumacs and the box elders and the trees and the grapes are shading the knotweed and they are competing successfully with it. I think there will be a need to continue to trim the perimeter next to the parking lot for the shrubs that were planted there, like Virginia rose and cranberry, a couple of viburnums and bayberries. Those get overrun by the native grapes as well as by not weed in front of them. So the new owner, who's going to be buying this property from I am the Walrus, will want to maintain that edge just for attractiveness, because these are attractive shrubs there. But if they're covered over with, if they have vines all over them, they're not going to do very well over the long term. So Erin is right that that front section does need some regular manicure, you know, just gardener-type maintenance. I wanted to say that the worst, the reason that Japanese knotweed is considered such a terrible plant in terms of wetland functions is that it forms such a dense monoculture and excludes other species from getting started and coming with it. What we have done is we have allowed a lot of other native species to coexist with it and to dominate it. And so, in other regards, Japanese knotweed, it's great at taking up groundwater with nutrients in it, pollutants in it, for, you know, nutrient attenuation function. It transpires a lot of water for cooling purposes. It's aesthetically, unless it's been killed by herbicide or whatever, it's pretty attractive. And so, the, from a functional standpoint, I don't think this little section of riparian corridor along Patens Brook is significantly impaired by the residual presence of maybe 20% cover of Japanese knotweed. And we, you know, and I think that the, you know, we've gone above and beyond the simple mowing several times a year with all of the weeding and fostering of native plants that I've done and I had some interns helping me as well, or assistants, young assistants helping me. And I think that it's appropriate to return the bond because it has been restored to a functioning riparian corridor. Sumac is a great plant, even, and so is the box elder maple. Black cherries are great too, and, you know, I've gone by there and I've seen migrating birds feeding on the, in the trees and there, another thing that the, there also is a variety of wildflowers on the little grassy slope, just right below the fence, the edge.
You know what I'm listening to is, if the property was shaded, it wouldn't have had the knotweed on it. But you cut down quite a few trees by mistake, the paperwork says. And I imagine they were not cut down to allow the view from Route 5 into Tractor Supply. So half of the problem here you've created by wanting to have the exposure thing. So it's a double, you know, double-edged sword. Now, it's very aggressive what's going on there. And I think that, I don't know about the other commissioners, but if you're down to 20%, I don't know, I would need Erin's opinion on seeing if it could get better. If you're not going to get any better, there's not going to be any sense in holding the bond.
This is a site that needs to be maintained.
What's that?
This is a site, as Sigrid described the site, the corridor, the river corridor. The rest, the upland side is fine, but the river corridor, it needs to be maintained unless it's going to go wild, you know? So, but there isn't a mechanism for constant maintenance, it's just not built into our permit. In other words, the $10,000 really was for the plantings and so on he, the owner, already put in there, I believe, you know?
And that's been spent?
The cuttings. Yeah, that was to cover as if, in case he didn't get around to putting all those plantings in and using the services of the ecologist, but he did. I mean, there were some issues with certain seasons missed and so on and things cut and so on. This is not a good situation, but I don't see any way out of it because we don't have a mechanism to require maintenance for the next, you know, 20 years. There's no mechanism for that.
Mr. Chairman, it appears as though this situation has created what might be, perhaps you can follow me on this, correctly described as a pioneer situation for vegetation. You mentioned the sumac, classical sumac, cedars, farming fields. You leave something in the field and that's where you're going to get a cedar more likely. But anytime you have a pioneering situation, what has happened in this corridor is they've cleared and opened up sunlight. Then they tried to clear it out. So just everything in the world has come into there that could possibly be flushed down, as you just described, or blown in with the wind, there's all different kinds of transport for biological seeds. And so what you have is a lot of competition taking place there. And therefore Erin's point becomes very, very critical at this initial stage to try to encourage your desired plants to come in against what is otherwise competing against everything else. So it provides, I think, an opportunity to perhaps hedge against certain invasives if you could continue it for a bit longer. You just go in there once and try to clear things out, that's an invitation for anything in the world to set in. Eventually, the higher vegetation's going to take over, you'll create a natural condition there. But you want to try to direct it, you want to try to force it into a preferable way as soon as possible. And I think the only way to do that is early maintenance, at least for a while. Now, how we accomplish that with what we have here, I'm not sure, but maybe they could offer some input as to what you see moving forward for this area to become what you would like it to be. It appears as though if you just abandon it now, you don't really have any control. You started to make control, you've got it down to a very low percentage of knotweed. And I would suggest that if you could keep that going and perhaps even increase it for another year, you have a significantly better chance of producing the effects you might want down the road. Just a thought.
Commissioners, any other questions? Jeff? Mike? Deb?
No.
You're here for a bond release and when we approved this project, you had come up with a game plan that was going to work. From the pictures and what I see, it didn't work. So now you want to take your money and run and leave it there and you talked about a new owner becoming an asset to the prop.
I mean, I think the goal...
Sure, use the microphone.
I think that the overarching goal worked, was achieved. It just turned out that the native plants that came in, the sumac and the box elder, are thriving and taller and more vigorous, but they're certainly fine plants. And it just, the ones that, the many plants that we planted are not competing as well with the knotweed. So I, but they're there, they are present in the community, the ones that were on the plans. But I think we're lucky that the grape and the sumac are, and they are, I think the edges of the project do need long-term maintenance, as Erin said. But the interior really has pretty dense native taller plants that are keeping things in check and it's fairly stable in the interior. And I think that the river itself, the riverbank, is like most riverbanks in the Quinnipiac watershed. It's really, really affected by invasives, garlic mustard and mugwort coming down river. And that's a problem that has to be addressed on a larger scale, not this, this is just a drop, you know, one small example. And it's not going to, nothing can be done about the riverbank invasives.
Well, you talk about 20% on the knotweed.
Yeah.
Knotweed is worse than multiflora rose. It's 20% this year, next year it'll be 60% because it's an underground rooted type system that runs like crazy.
No, no, but other plants are occupying, there are plenty of other native plants that are occupying the ground and shading the ground, so there's not space for it to spread anymore. There are patches that are still there that add up to 20%, but then there's a lot of areas where the competitors are winning because, and with a lot of help from us in terms of trimming away the knotweed and keeping it low and weakening it. But we have been doing what you said, which is fostering the natives and reducing the, you know, going after the invasives. I cut about 55 bittersweet shoots, young bittersweets with a pesticide applicator doing cut and paint in September. And that's a proactive thing. Those were shoots, those were bittersweets that were, you know, maybe two feet, three feet tall. But in two years, they would have been enveloping a lot of the vegetation. So we did that and that's important. I would say in five years, another round of bittersweet treatment would be a very helpful thing for this. It's helpful for any edge, again, next to a shopping center, any forest edge should be treated for bittersweet.
And with a new owner coming on board, he's going to agree to this five-year treatment you're talking about?
Well, that would be something that you might put in a stipulation, to come back in five years with a cut and paint invasive of edges, you know, the edge swath, that really would help.
And your original approval we gave you, did we talk about getting rid of the knotweed completely or have 20% sitting somewhere on the site?
You know, I actually came into this project about three years ago. I, you know, I wasn't closely involved for the first three years and I didn't make the plan. So I know that the bittersweet was controlled in the beginning and that was the first step of the plan, the big bittersweet that was already on a lot of the trees. And that was successfully treated, but after six years, there were a lot of new bittersweet coming in and that's what we controlled this past year. So, you know, it takes a while, but birds bring it in and there's seeds in the seed bank too.
So if this was your project and it was approved five years ago, what would you say to the person that came in front of you and says, this is what we've got after five years, we want our bond back? What would you say, there needs to be a maintenance program or we need to go back and redo this? Because like Mr. Hellman said, you opened it up and you brought in a lot of new characters.
Yeah, but luckily, most of the new characters are good. And the ones that aren't good, like Tree of Heaven, we got rid of right away. And so I would say that there could be a couple of specific, in the memorandum, we talked about, and this I think needs to be, permission needs to be granted to the new owner to do vine removal and, you know, mugwort trimming on the perimeter. That's where the most light is and, you know, also if, and then on a reg, probably they would want to do it three or four or five times a year, you know, somebody, a guy go out there and trim the vines that are climbing up over the shrubs and then be instructed as to a couple of bad weeds that should be pulled or cut close to the ground.
I don't think it's this commission's charge to tell the new owner or the existing owner what to do with this property. His duty charged to hire somebody as a professional like yourself to come up with a plan. Now, if you find out this plan's not working like I believe you're telling us now, then I believe it's your job as a professional to go back to either Tractor Supply or the new owner and say, we need to do this so we continue forward. I'm not comfortable giving you the bond back because that's the only thing we have to hold you liable for what's not working out there.
Well, any edge, natural edge next to a parking lot, regardless of where it is, any roadside, if you want it to look nice, you should give it some attention, some maintenance. This is not, the plan is working fine, but the area, this section of Patens Brook is surrounded by a road and by a parking lot. And so if the new owner wants it to look nice and not be a vine tangle at the edge, he will need to do some, and he'll want to do some landscaping. I mean, just the way he landscapes it, trims his own shrub, the shrubs next to the little Virgin Care Building and mows the lawn, also trims some vines. I think that we could write like a one paragraph, list of the basic... basic landscaping maintenance that the adjacent commercial property would probably want to do and to keep it looking nice and to keep the trees from, things from falling into the parking lot and, you know, being hazardous or whatever.
We're not charged to tell the applicant or the owner what to do with this property?
Well, you can, you can make suggestions, say this would be, these are the kinds of things that you are allowed to do. You can permit them to go onto the property into the restoration area to do that. And then if they want it to stay nice-looking and for, which is for their business, they can do it. But they, but you can say you may not use pesticides or mow, close mow or anything like that. You can specify what would be permitted.
And what happens if he says he's not interested and let it just go back to its natural state?
Well, it'll just be like any roadside around any commercial project next to a natural area. You know, there'll be some bittersweet, there'll be some tangles, there'll be some grapes. It's not, it's not going to be a disaster. It's just going to be, you know, a messy edge.
Well, I'm looking at your messy edge here, and it looks to me as though the poison sumac is up front.
Not a poison sumac, it's a staghorn sumac.
Well, it's a schumac.
Sumac.
Within a couple of years, you're going to be able to cut that down and make firewood out of it because the growth it's got here over the last four years is, seems pretty, it's pretty well hardy.
It doesn't, yeah, it's growing very well and it makes new shoots. It gets thicker. And they're young plants that are bushy and low. And then other plants get taller. So it's like a population. And it's good, it looks, it's tidy-looking and it's good. The shrubs that I'm talking about, that were the vines, we've been trimming the vines are further to the left of this photo. But seriously, I think that it's in the interest of the adjacent property owner to keep it tidy. But you have a right to restrict the type of activities that can be done in this restoration corridor. And you don't want them just going wholesale with herbicides, cutting everything down, you know, planting day lilies, whatever. You don't, you don't want, you want the existing planted native shrubs to stay and, you know, grass cover in front, and they can get rid of the knotweed and the mugwort. So I think that, I think that actually, that you should realize there's been a tremendous amount of work put into allowing the grapes and the berries and the sumac and the cherries, all these things to prosper and get started. And they have and they are competing, have competed. And they're shading out the sumac in most of the area. There are few patches of sumac that remain, and there's mugwort along the stream that came in from the water.
Don't forget the microphone. Ally? Carol?
None at this time.
All right. I've got a suggestion because this is, I think this is, so many arguments on both sides of the equation here. I think Erin should go out and give us a report next week, next month, based on Sigur's comments, based on the 20%. See what her opinion is on, is it going to improve? Is it not going to improve? And then also the issue of trying to get the property owner, new, old, whichever, to do, well, to do what the bond was for. Maybe you got to look up the bond for specifics.
This is just a very narrow area right next to that, to where that new office building is. It's not, you know, it's probably a total of, what, 10, eight feet by 40 feet.
Erin will have no problem finding it then.
Yeah.
Is that okay with the commission?
Yeah.
Report next month. Erin, you have any questions regarding it?
I'm just a little bit, for a timeline, I imagine the sale is going to go ahead irrespective of what we do tonight. Is that true, Sigurin?
I think so. I don't know for sure, but he's interested in doing it.
I'm unsure how that works.
What difference does that make to us?
Well, the bond is, was posted by the old owner.
Then why during last month did you not go out there and have some kind of an opinion of what's going on there? But did you think this was just going to get approved tonight to release the bond?
I thought, we kind of went over it last time, that it was sort of what I've said tonight, that...
We went over it last time?
Just briefly in the minutes, you know, kind of like that this is not what we had hoped it would be. I think I expressed that last time. It was not, the six-year plan that was laid out and approved and bonded is not what we have there, which is, things happen. I mean, it's, does it have to be what we approved exactly? No. I mean, it doesn't have to be. The bond can be released. It doesn't, so really, really, I'm interested in maintenance going onward, and I don't know how to get that. I don't know how to affect that, the mechanism. I don't know how to do that.
I don't think you can do that. It's people's property. You can prevent them from doing certain things like tearing it apart. But if they choose to leave it and let it go natural, the difficulty with this, it's a strip. You're never going to have a canopy that's going to prevent the understory from developing nilly-willy. It's like the edge of a forest, not inside under the canopy where you could really control things. You don't have any control here. You've got sunlight coming in underneath everything. It's almost impossible to accomplish a nice, clean, pristine, weed-free-looking environment under these circumstances. I don't see it ever being accomplished in the long run unless there is long-run, continuous annual maintenance. You're not going to get that, and it really shouldn't be a requirement, I don't think anyways. Nature will take its course.
Well, that's the other alternative, just to let it go. Let nature take its course.
Yeah, then just release the bond tonight and we're all set then?
Well, I'm saying that it's a failed project, but let nature take its course. It gets bushy, it gets sumacky, it gets Japanese knotweed, but to control it is...
So let's release the bond tonight.
Is that what you're saying? Let, release the bond? When the bond was put in place because the work had to be done, be done right for the four or five years, she's back to report that it hasn't, it's basically failed. She's put her heart and soul into this project and it's failed. So what do we do now? We give her back her bond and say, let it go back to being natural and have the schumac or whatever, the cherry trees fall down in there, lock the pipe going across Colony Street? What is your, what is your plan here?
Well, if we hold the bond, then I don't see, are you thinking we could take some of that bond money and get a maintenance agreement going forward into the future? A five-year agreement?
I think I'm glad I'm not the environmental planner, that's what I'm thinking.
I think one of the problems might be it was an unreasonable expectation. And if it can't be accomplished, I don't care how much you put your heart into it. It just can't be done unless you're there every other week like a farmer taking care of his produce because he wants to get something good there. This isn't that situation. I think they did a good job getting 80% elimination. You're never going to win unless you're there all the time. And so I think the bottom line, it goes beyond reasonable expectations to expect it to come out the way you imagine it should. I don't, I don't see how you can do it.
I believe in the last meeting you told us to, we all could drive by there and take a look at what was happened and what was happening. I mean, that's been your quote all along here because it's right on the main drag. So now that we're there, the five years is up or four years is up?
Six.
What is it?
It was a six-year plan, yeah.
All right. So what's the next step for us? What do you want us to do, Erin?
If the property wasn't imminently being sold, or maybe it is sold for all I know at this minute, we could hold back some of that money and put it into a maintenance scheme for the next few years. What?
I don't think $10,000 is, the maintenance scheme is going to last one year with the knotweed coming in heavy and all the other things that need to be addressed that she's brought up tonight. I'm not sure. I'm not the professional here. But we need to know where we're going here because we give back the bond and they walk away and it's a done deal. You're saying let it go back to being natural? And Mr. Hellman believes that that's just what it's going to do, go back to being natural? I believe the knotweed's going to take, it's going to take off, it's just going to be a cluster is what it's going to be.
I think it should go, realistically, it's never going to look, it's never going to be what we want it to be or what we originally wanted it to be. Without, as Commissioner Hellman's saying, constant vigilance, maybe once a month.
So you want to give them back their bond?
I don't, we don't keep bonds. If we keep it, we have to use it. I mean, we can't just hold it indefinitely. We'd have to, I would have to talk to the law department, how you, a mechanism to use some of that money for maintenance. Or give back the bond and say, well, we learned, the commission, we all learned from this experiment.
So next year this time, we look across the street and we can't see Ryerson's building because everything is overgrown and they come in with a tree chopper to go ahead and take some of the trees out and just do what they want. That's okay. It won't be watched because nobody's going to be maintaining or addressing it.
And we haven't talked about the westerns. Is it western, the side toward Walmart, that side? It's constant, it's solid knotweed on that side. We haven't even talked about that, so.
Not part of the restoration area.
Well, I'd have to check them out, but it's part of the Tractor Supply property, though. But, so it's, it's, yeah. I'd be happy to write a report, Mr. Chairman, which you've outlined here.
Unfortunately, you, what we've discovered tonight or in this discussion, you're not totally committed to giving back the bond. And it'd be nice to have some maintenance going on going forward to try and increase the area and maintain it better. But one of the commissioners talks about that it was an unreasonable, not an unreasonable, it was a long stretch to begin with on the area. So you have this, and another is, is how do you maintain or who are you going to require this as a maintained area? So there's so many questions. The easiest thing is to give them back their bond and let nature take over. That's the easiest thing. Everything after that becomes a major problem, major issue.
And honestly, I don't know how it works when you sell a property and there's a bond on it. Does anyone know how that works?
That's not something we're concerned about. If that was an issue, that would have been addressed a long time before the closing. That would have surfaced a long time ago.
I think it's on the current, I am the walrus. I think the new owner goes merrily on. It's not his issue, the bond's not his issue.
So, so what you're saying, the property's sold, Walrus wants their money back, and they don't own the property anymore, so they're not going to do any of the work. They're not going to require it to do anything.
Unless Sigurin can straighten me out.
It would be the new owner that would, that would do...
Microphone.
It would be the new owner that would do, and one wouldn't expect them to do any more than a little maintenance right near their building. But I want to remind that even though there's no longer a tree canopy over the whole area, there is a shrub and vine canopy, which is creating shade at ground level and really is slowing down the knotweed in the interior of the site. So it's not as bad as it, as it could be if there weren't a stable shrub stratum, basically, that is native.
I think that's very important, too.
Yeah, and it is a native shrub stratum. There's a lot of grape, and grape is a great plant. There's also a lot of several important butterflies and moths feed on grape. It's not bittersweet by any stretch of the imagination, even though it's gone.
Back to Erin again. Where are we, Erin? The ball's in your court. Where are we here?
I'd like to put it to next month so we can, I can get some legal counsel on this and explore options.
Very good.
I think one of the things you have to keep in mind is stability of the area for concerns about erosion. Aesthetics notwithstanding, I mean, you might not like the looks of certain types of vegetation, but if you have stability, that's probably the most important thing for wetland protection versus, I don't like that plant or those plants.
I saw no erosion out there, and knotweed is great for stability. It holds banks in, it holds those banks in. Yes, it does.
I also think that when they started the development on Route 5, this project, they thought they needed the exposure. But what you see, the activity going on at that location now, I think it's well-established, and the exposure is not quite as critical. It's not like you're driving down the road looking for something else. You pretty well know that's there. All right, table to next month. Okay. All right, before we get into new business, I want to take an application that has been on everybody's plate for a month or more, and that is a cease and correct order for
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the commission, for your record, my name is Dennis Sennaviva. I'm an attorney with the Sennaviva Law Firm, represent the owner. That's before you. I have an owner representative, Amy Lessey Ropp, who's one of the members of, or representative of the LLC. And to her left is Jim Cassidy, our project engineer. Mr. Chairman, I know that in the environmental planner's report, she indicates that it may be prudent to go through sort of a chronology of why we're here, how we got here. Because as you may know, hopefully you've had an opportunity to read, and it's been passed out to you, I believe, my memorandum to you as chairman, the members of the commission, and Ms. O'Hare as the environmental planner, it's dated December 1. What I've done is tried to give you a chronology, give you background on how we got here. My client is efforting to use the zoning regulations through the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission to reuse this existing site. There's an adaptive reuse provision in your zoning regs that allow the conversion of the existing convalescent facility to multi-family. Again, that's by a special permit, and that application's been filed to the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission. That was filed back, I think, in June. During the review process of that application, initially, everything looked fine. We did not have to come to the Wetlands Commission. As a matter of fact, there is a memo from the environmental planner to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated May 8th, May 5th, rather, 2023, in which she indicates that the project engineer should inspect the drainpipe, outfall at the rear of the building that goes into the river for required maintenance. Planning and zoning could make that a condition of approval. So that was the extent of the concerns of the environmental planner back on June of, rather, May of 2023. So we were all set to go forward with an adaptive reuse. We had no reason to come to the commission. There is no activity within the upland review area or the wetlands as part of that application. But I think the Friday before the Monday meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission in June of this year, it came to light that there had been a cease and correct order entered by this commission five years earlier, June of 2018, which was unbeknownst to my client and I think not recalled by actually anyone. and I think not recalled by actually anyone, other than perhaps, I believe, a neighbor. So information came to light that in June of 2018, the then owner of the convalescent facility had asked for some assistance from this commission, and you were generous enough to provide some assistance by allowing them to come in under this emergency situation where instead of filing an application, you issued a cease and correct order. It was procedurally a way to get in more quickly than otherwise would normally be so. And I have the minutes from the June of 2018 Wetlands Commission meeting, and at that time, the then engineer representing the then owner indicated that there had been a problem. Everyone was aware of the problem. There's a driveway into the site. There are two culverts underneath the driveway. One of them had collapsed, so it was a concern about getting emergency access to the site, fire trucks, ambulances, et cetera. And so there was a need to do this work within the, the collapsed culvert. At that meeting in June of 2018, the suggestion was made by then engineer Mike Ott. Dave Parent was the acting chairman at that time for that meeting, and he had suggested putting in these sleeves within the culverts so that it would support the culverts and allow the driveway to be used appropriately. And he had indicated, according to your minutes, and I'm happy to offer them to you, Mr. Chairman, he indicated that culverts could be rehabilitated by installing a slip line, a smaller diameter pipe into the larger pipes, and grout the space between the existing pipe and the new liner pipe. And one of the commissioners asked what sort of sizes would be installed. And he indicated that, you know, one of the culverts was in better shape, and a 50-inch outside diameter could be installed, and the second culvert was in worse shape. That's the one that collapsed, and he recommended a 36-inch outside diameter slip liner. And during the course of those discussions, the concern was to get the work done quickly, to get it done appropriately, and to have a plan submitted for review by the environmental planner and the town engineer. Commissioner Kern said that the Wetlands Commission can approve this tonight and has jurisdiction because this is a critical care facility. So prudently, this commission, you know, approved a plan that had been submitted orally by Mike Ott, a reputable engineer, he used to be a town engineer in Madison. And he indicated in answers to questions from several of the commissioners that the work that was, that would be done would create some backup of water going through the culverts because they'd be smaller. And his suggestion was that there was 15 feet of headwater between the stream bed to the top to the driveway, so there was an area where he could use sort of the northern part of the front yard of this site as a, almost like a detention pond as part of this process. So that was June of 2018. In July of 2018, it's still on your agenda, and you asked, Mr. Chairman, you know, what was the status of that emergency driveway crossing work? And the environmental planner said that she had spoken to the engineer twice. I'm assuming that means the project engineer, there was a delay in getting the work done because the company that was supplying materials wanted to ensure that it could work. And she said the applicant is trying to get the perfect slip lining for the project. So again, you affirmed your cease and desist, or correct order, rather, and it got tabled to the September meeting. You don't meet in August, as you know better than I. At the September meeting, still under violations, your planner said that there had been no movement on the project. She said the original engineer, that would be Mike Ott, called in a structural engineer who specializes in bridge work and told her they should have a plan next week. So that was September 5th of 2018.
Excuse me just a moment. At the first meeting, was a plan required?
That was part of the order, was to submit a plan to be.
I don't think you mentioned that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah. So the, the, Ms. O'Hare said the first thing to be done next week, this was in the June 2018 meeting, is to submit a plan, which she then will review with the town engineer. The next thing would be to install the erosion controls that are drawn on the plans that would be coming in a week. So again, the idea was, again, prudently, you said, okay, we, you got to get this work done. It's an emergency order. Get us some plans. You've explained orally what you're going to do. Now put those plans on paper, have them reviewed by the environmental planner, and importantly, the town engineer, and go at it. So that was, again, that was June, and then we're, I'm just moving forward on what's happened over that period of time. So July, nothing happened. September, nothing happened, again, other than the then project engineer indicated that they were looking to get some sort of bridge specialist, structural engineer, to give them more advice on what work to do. So now October of 2018, October 3rd, again, still on your agenda, and the chairman Vitale said, there's the driveway crossing into the nursing home, what's the status? Suggested the planner's required to take the next step, which is notice from the Wetlands Commission to the then owner. And the environmental planner said that Attorney Small, your corporation counsel, had told her to schedule a meeting with her regarding an injunction. I'm not sure to enjoin what, and that the Wetlands Commission doesn't need to take any action tonight, noting the violation still stands. So that's October of 2018. November of 2018, still on your agenda, Ms. O'Hare said that she received a cease and correct order, but no work was being done, or they received a cease and correct order. She said that when she contacted the owner, he said that the work was done last Friday. So apparently, the work was done without the submission of any plans to the town engineer or to the planner. And she indicated that goes against the order that this commission had entered. She said that all the material washed out and end up in a neighbor's property, and indicated she would visit the site with town engineer Rob Boultramitis to see what was constructed. So that was November 7th of 2018. December 5th of 2018, again, still on your agenda, Ms. O'Hare explained that she and the engineering department would visit the site next week. So apparently, that month wasn't a good month. She said she received a call from the contractor who informed her that the slip lining was in fact installed without prior review by the town. That was December of 2018. January of 2019, again, on your agenda, discussion about what had been done. I believe at that point, still, that the engineer had not gone out with the environmental planner, and that was the last time it lay on your agenda, January of 2019. So you look at the February 2019 agenda, it's not on your agenda, nor has it been on there since, since February of 2019. Needless to say, my client, when they bought the property, was not aware of this. And as you can tell from the report that was submitted by the environmental planner to the Planning and Zoning Commission, she writes memos on all applications, of course, as all departments do. The only suggestion was to maintain some pipe leading from the building. So now, during the process in June of this year of going forward with our adaptive reuse application in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, this old, five-year-old order comes to light. And my client has certain options at that time when they find out that unbeknownst to them and nowhere notified, no how notified, they could, they had a couple of options. One was to certainly file whatever sort of litigation would be appropriate for any damages on the part of the town failing to either complete the remedy of that, of that cease and correct order five years earlier, or they would expend tens of thousands of dollars to find an engineering solution to what was ordered back in 2018. And at this point, without relinquishing any of their legal rights, they might, they might have relative to actions and inactions by Wallingford officials back at that time, they directed Mr. Cassidy to prepare plans in an effort to close this five-year-old issue. And so that's what we have been working on since June of 2018. So now we stand here six months later, so now this is a five-and-a-half-year-old issue. And encouragingly, Mr. Chairman, is the fact that there has been a substantial interaction with your town engineer, who has worked collaboratively with Mr. Cassidy, given him some very good direction, and she has submitted to you and to all the commissioners a memorandum dated November 8th. It's the same date as a memo you received from the corporation counsel, Janice Small, indicating that that which is before you is the, sort of the closure, if you will, of the 2018 order. So that what's before you is to, is, it's not a separate application. You'll notice it's not on your agenda as such. It's to close the 2018 order. So we've submitted the plans that the engineer did not provide in 2018. And the plans that we've submitted, actually, and Mr. Cassidy can explain them if you'd like, they're far better than what was proposed back in June of 2018, which was to use the site as a detention pond. And actually, that's what's, what's happened. The work was done. Slip liners were put in. Five years goes by, not a blip on any agenda, not a comment from, you know, anything on the land records, no notice, nothing. It just comes up, actually, from our perspective, out of the blue. But nonetheless, we're here, and so we're anxious to get this closed so that we can move forward on Monday at the Planning and Zoning Commission. They've kept their public hearing open with the idea that based upon Corporation Counsel Small's memorandum, that this should come to you to address the cease and correct order that was issued in June of 2018, and that based upon the fairly significant memo from your town engineer indicating that she is now finally content or satisfied, if not pleased, with the plans that have been submitted. Again, there's been some iterations, some changes, and Jim can explain the plans to you, but what, what ends up happening is that the plans that we're presenting to you are designed to try to mimic what was the condition from the 1970s when the building was built, and not, and not simply to use the headwater space between the stream bed and, and the driveway as some sort of, you know, artificial detention basin on the north side of the property. But I wanted to give you a sense, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, that this is not, I mean, I don't want it, it shouldn't sound as, as a huge issue, because I think sometimes I get that impression when I read certain planner comments. This is an issue that has been before you for five years, and apparently hasn't been that significant because it never got back on your agenda, and it would not have come to your knowledge, because again, the June memorandum from the environmental planner towards the, for the Planning and Zoning Commission indicates that it doesn't have this, this factor at all in the, in that report. And I'm not suggesting that, that's inappropriate. It's the fact that, you know, what my client is trying to do is not change the property, just trying to change the building, the use within the building. So that's the background. The plans are here. They've been reviewed, actually, more than reviewed. They've been collaboratively prepared with the town engineering staff. They want to make sure that it works. They wanted to make certain that it meets all the necessary engineering standards. They wanted to make sure that it handles the velocity of water, the volume of water that existed prior to the collapse, try to return the site as much as possible to where it was before the collapse. And, you know, if, if this commission is interested, Mr. Cassidy can certainly explain what has been proposed and approved by your town engineer and recognized as such by your corporation counsel.
Okay. Erin, you're in agreement that this is going to clear up the cease and correct order?
That's the intent. It's only you would clear it up when it's built. This is the, the plan. The commission's being asked to approve the plan, and then it gets built.
But this plan satisfies the cease and correct order?
That's the intent, yes.
You agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioners, would you like to see the plan? If not, Nick?
Not only did I see the plan for a couple hours, but I went out there today to see what was actually going on. And there's other things that are affected by this plan. I believe that the engineer probably did an excellent job by wanting to put the third pipe in. Something we've never had problems with in the last 20 years is upstream erosion and downstream erosion. It's not the town's policy to dump somebody else's problem downstream on somebody else's property. And from what I could see out there today, there is a problem, downstream problem. So I'm not comfortable, and I'm not saying that Mr. Cassidy's plan isn't an excellent plan, but I'm saying that we need to look at what's going on with the headwaters to the north and the scowling to the south.
And I think you're right, but that we doesn't include my client, with all due respect. I think that's a town issue. I, I agree with you.
Well, it's, it's a town issue on private property. So for us to say to go ahead and let him do what this corrective action is, is just going to add to, salt to the wound downstream.
Well, that's not its design. Its design is to mimic what was there before, which is the direction that we were given. That's the direction that you offered back in 2018 to the then applicant.
And what's going to happen when he puts his third pipe in?
He's going to reduce the velocity by that scour hole and by the large-size rip rap. But Jim can explain it. That's the plan. It's to bring it back where it was. You know, it's sort of like when you do developments, as you know far better than I do. You have on, for drainage purposes, you have zero increase runoff, right? You want to make sure that after development, the amount of runoff from a site is the same as it was prior to development, zero increase. It's, your function isn't to make it better, it's not to make it worse. That's, that's the standard that's used in every community, and that's an engineering requirement. That's kind of the similar setup here, and that's why the engineers looked at it. She said, I mean, we would have preferred to have stayed with the slip lining that was recommended by Mike Ott in, in 2018. They seem to be working. There has been no complaints that have been identified for the last five and a half years. No one's come to you that I'm aware of. The report from the environmental planner to the Planning and Zoning Commission doesn't say, oh my goodness, this is a terrible situation. It says it is one little pipe attached to the building that ought to be cleaned. I mean, it was not a big deal until someone remembered, finally, five years later after my client bought the property. So the goal, the direction, the direction you gave, and I, you personally, you as a commission gave in 2018, was to complete the work that Mike Ott represented. This work is better. It doesn't have a 15-foot headwater, you know, on the northern side of, of the driveway. It's designed to mimic, that was what the current town engineer said, try to mimic what it was before the collapse. Your function doesn't have to make it better, it just doesn't have to make it worse. And I think that's a fair resolution of, it's a very significant issue, and it's costly one.
And when you read a book and there's a story in the book, you picture in your mind what that story is telling you. The town, the town engineer agreed with the numbers that Mr. Cassidy provided. Did she ever go out there and look at actually what's going on out there, or is she just going by visions on his print?
I believe she's been there. Matter of fact, the, they, both she and the prior town engineer were very instrumental in coming up with some of the ideas, including the third pipe. I mean, this was a collaborative effort because I think there was a recognition that there had been some inactivity. You know, it's interesting, I was looking at the minutes from your, this July 2023 meeting when this was finally brought back to you, and I think all of you commented, starting with the chairman, but all of you commented about the fact that, you know, this wasn't just a wetlands issue, this was a, this was an engineering issue, I think.
Legal?
Legal issue. And so all of you kind of indicated that, you know, there had been, a ball had been dropped, but this had to go back to engineering and had to go back to legal. These are the minutes from your July 26, 2023 special meeting. Commissioner Phillips says, I think that we have a multi-department failure, not only wetlands, but engineering. I think we have to do, look at it legally to do some fixes, and she was correct. Commissioner Caruso said this should be in engineering. Even the fire department has to approve these bridges, and that's what we've done. We've gone back to do that. Commissioner Nekio says, I agree with Mike. It seems to be more of an engineering issue. You're correct, and that's what we've done. So we took your direction, not only in 2018, but again, we looked at it five years later in 2023. Chairman Vitale says that it goes back to legal with the decision of what the department heads want to do. That's the direction that she, that he gave to your environmental planner. So we've taken the direction that was provided by this commission in 2018. We've taken the direction provided by this commission in, in July of this year. We've made a plan that is significantly more expensive for my client than what was approved back in 2020, 2018. We're making it better. It's all on our dime. And does it resolve every issue of flooding upstream and down? No. But it takes the situation that was not resolved in 2018, and we're here to make it better. And that's been confirmed by your engineer.
I think I take exception. You've made a couple comments that the plan that was approved in 2018, I don't think any plan was approved in 2018.
The idea was, no, the idea was very specific.
What plan was approved? The verbal plan?
That's right, yeah. And that's why it had to be followed up with plans.
With written plans.
I'm sorry?
We never saw written plans.
You never got, you're right, you're absolutely correct. But...
So a verbal conversation was what you're saying was approved?
He gave you exactly what was going to be done. He said that Mrs. Page, you remember Rosalind Page, had done survey work and believed these culverts could be rehabilitated by installing a slip line, installing a smaller diameter pipe into the larger pipes and to grout the space between the existing pipe and the new liner pipe. Mr. Ott said the easiest way to access these culverts is through the upstream side. Mr. Simon, I guess it was the commissioner, then asked about the five-foot pipe and what size diameter the contractor would go down to. Mr. Ott explained that one of the culverts was in better shape, and it appears a 50-inch outside diameter could be installed. He said the second culvert is in worse shape with an eight-inch joint deflection, and will probably only get a 36-inch outside diameter. He said that because of steep banks and the fact there's a 15-foot from the stream bed to the driveway, there is a lot of allowable headwater. He said the water surface can build up without affecting the site or neighboring properties upstream. He said he doesn't see a problem going from a five-foot to a three-foot diameter pipe. He said the grout will be a cement product which hardens and has strength. Commissioner Kern asked about the sediment erosion control plan. Mr. Ott explained this plan will be submitted to Ms. O'Hare. Mr. Kern asked about the silt upstream. Mr. Ott said there's silt upstream because of the debris dam, and it will be removed and taken off-site. And it goes on and on, I could read the whole thing.
Hang on, I'll go ahead. I think the point is, though, even though that was described to us, there was no opportunity to do any calculations or anything. I don't really consider that a plan. It might have been what was discussed, the important thing is we, the commission gave him an emergency permit to fix it. But if that plan, if we had an opportunity to have that plan, and it ended up in the engineering department, and they said, oh, by the way, this isn't going to work, we wouldn't be here today.
And that's, to a certain extent, that's what your current town engineer said, she didn't like that plan. She, that's why she's suggesting a plan that is much more expensive and requires the third culvert.
Let's chop the price out. Twice now you've brought in the price thing. Did that back in 2018, was it three pipes, two pipes, or one pipe?
Two.
Two? He told us here in front of the commission.
Yeah, I'll give you the minutes.
It's only two pipes?
Yeah.
And we agreed to a 36 and a 48.
You directed him to go forward.
On an emergency request.
Absolutely. With plans.
Debbie?
No comment.
Mike?
No comments.
Jeff?
No questions.
I like the plan, honestly. And I think to maintain it, one of the things that has me a little concerned, nothing major, I just wonder, you talk about the flood conditions and stuff that could come downstream, including perhaps a tree trunk that had broken into the stream up there. Would it be beneficial to ensure the integrity of this system? I don't even know if it's possible, although I've seen it elsewhere. They put iron grids in front of the inflow to prevent it from getting clogged, because if you were to clog, the smaller the pipe, the more easily it can be clogged. That's simple physics.
Yeah, I mean...
And with the smaller pipe there, I'm just wondering to ensure that it maintains its flowability to prevent anything from clogging the pipe, just a bar system in front.
Right. I mean, for a water course like this, I would not recommend the bar system in front of it. With, when you go to a bar system, for the record, Jim Cassidy, with the engineering firm, Allison Pearson and Cassidy, when you go with a bar system, you obviously are making your openings even much smaller than the 40-inch, 48-inch diameter. So you're talking about the probability of a stump coming down the stream. But now with a much smaller opening, now every little twig, branch, which is a lot more realistic of coming down the stream, would constantly be blocking that culvert. I personally, for this size, I've never seen it for this size culvert, putting a grate system in front of it. I think it's been five years, there has been some debris such as brigs and branches, which they've gone in and cleaned up for maintenance purposes. The additional of the 48-inch culverts is going to reduce the potential for that to happen. In addition to, as mentioned, there was concerns about, you know, washouts downstreams. Yes, if you look at the culverts right now, at the outfall, it looks like the pool, the outfall, has eroded over years. There is small rip wrap in it, it's probably washed downstream over years. As part of this extensive design we've gone through, we tried to come up with a system to ensure that doesn't happen. That's where the majority of your activities are going to occur, to make a proper outlet for not only the new culvert, but for the existing culverts, or creating what's called a scour hole with appropriately sized rip wrap. And just to give you an example, with all the, part of the calculations that were submitted, we had to do something that's called the D-50 calculation, which determines the diameter of the size of the stone that you needed to use. And based upon the flows and all these pipes that are coming in, we came up with the size, medium size of stone of about 26 inches square. 26-inch square piece of stone is about 16 cubic feet. It actually weighs about 3,000 pounds for one stone. Not a high chance of it going back down the stream. The scour hole will continue to have the rip wrap stay there. What it does is it reduces the velocity, which prevents downstream erosion as the resource site. If there's other issues downstream that have been caused, you know, that, as attorney said, we can't correct other things. We can correct it up to our property line. We are significantly reducing the velocity at the outlet of pipes. As was mentioned, the, we won't call it a plan, but the idea that was brought before you in 2018 was to slip line it, put a 48-inch diameter slip line in one and a 36-inch in the other, which they did. The idea at that point was to use the excess head or the elevation of the road, basically creating a detention pond upstream. No one ever did any calculations on it to figure out what actually happens, but as you have a higher head, what it does is it pushes the water through the culverts, and it comes out at a higher velocity. So now we've actually, based upon the calculations I ran, we've dropped the head elevation by six feet, significantly reducing the velocity at the outlet. So you don't have that detention upstream. The problem they were having with detention upstream or using the ponding, and the complaint they were getting at the town, is it was not only backing up on our property, but it was actually backing up on adjoining pieces of the property too. So there was a complaint of flooding. So the town engineer wasn't satisfied with letting that occur. We came up with appropriate design. We were asked to restore it to light conditions. What was it like when there was two 60-inch culverts out there? So I had to come up with a scenario of culverts to make it work, so it's very similar. I ran the calculations, I'm coming up with a difference in about head elevation of about a half a foot, not about six, six feet plus, that was being caused by the slip lines that are in there right now. So it definitely takes care of that problem. Yes, there's going to be more water going downstream. We're taking care of the velocity as it comes out of our pipes by putting that scour hole in. You also may ask, you know, I'll just bring this up, in case people are wondering, is why are we not just replacing the culverts? Why are we adding a third culvert? We have an active water course there. It's very difficult to be able to remove a culvert, install a new culvert, and be able to continue to pass water through an active stream. This is actually something, when I actually met with Rob Baltimore Midas, your prior town engineer, he's actually the one who came up with the idea of adding a third culvert, and I've actually thought it was genius. Because what we're allowed to do, it substantially cuts down the timeframe for us to do the work, in that I can coffer dam off the side of the water course where we are going to be doing the work. We can remove a wing of the concrete existing wing wall. We can excavate the road, we can excavate for the culvert while the two existing culverts are flowing. So perhaps, and over the course of time, if there is any major event, it can continue to pass. We don't have water entering through our work area, we don't have sediment coming out of our work area into that area. We can do all this work, get the new culvert up, operational, get rip wrap at its outlet, and then actually go back and remove the coffer dams. Now, the only remaining part is we need to build the scour hole in the remaining portion where the two existing culverts are. To me, to do that work at that point, you're talking about a 30 by 40 area. Realistically, is about two days' worth of work. That can really be managed with weather, putting either sandbags or coffer dams around it to deepwater that area for a very short period of time. If I were to have to replace, if I had replaced the one 60-inch culvert, did all that work, again, it's going to be up to the contractor and the type of equipment he's using, is the timeframe, but I would estimate all that work would be about one month for one culvert. If I were to have to do it on the other culvert, I have another month of activity to do the other culvert. So a lot more time consuming, it's a lot more risky because you're restricting all the flow in the water course to one culvert while you do the work, whereas now I'm keeping two culverts.
All right. You talk about time, time, time. What's your time schedule for this?
Start the work?
This winter, next spring, next summer?
My recommendation would be to do it during a low flow. Low flow is going to typically be either winter, or it's usually summer. Unfortunately, this summer wasn't a low-flow time.
So you're going to start it right now?
Like to try to do it this winter.
And you're going to be able to pave the driveway, or pave the driveway in the spring?
Probably have to get paved in the spring at this point.
Okay. All right. Now, there, one of Aaron's recommendations was on the land records. I don't know what that means, if anything. I know she wants to be sure this gets done, and you, as well as you do.
Yeah, one of the things, one of my comments was the fact that, you know, under the regulations, you have the ability to put notices on the land record, which would have provided, back in 2018, had that been done in 2019, during a title search, that would have come up, and my client would have been able to determine or learn.
Whatever.
Right, right. So the problem of putting the notice on now is that it precludes financing. So now, you want to do the work, you want to borrow money, you want to get this done, you do a title search, and you see a notice of violation. All right, get rid of that before we can close. Well, we need to do the work to get rid of it, we need the money to do the work. So it doesn't, it's an idea that should have been used in 2019. It doesn't work now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Now, but Planning and Zoning has got a comment regarding this driveway crossing.
Yeah, they indicated at the last meeting, the chairman had indicated that he was of a mindset, which we're hoping to change, that he thought the work should be done before a building permit could be pulled on the building itself, the work for the building. I mean, I think that the ultimate, the ultimate control that every municipality has and typically uses is all the work has to be completed before a CO is issued. And that, to me, is...
Okay. Are you in agreement with the rest of Aaron's recommendations?
Yeah, they primarily come from the town engineer's memo.
So, okay, I'll entertain them. First of all, this is not an application, so there's no significant activity involved. So I'll entertain a motion to accept this plan to satisfy the cease and correct order that goes back to 2018.
Hey, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I have one question.
Okay.
Mr. Cassidy, I want you to explain to me how the CFM coming out of those pipes had scoured that southern exit to that driveway. I don't know how deep it was, because you couldn't see really the bottom of it this morning.
Oh, three feet deep, yeah.
You're going to add CFM to the third pipe, it's going to erode and scour again. Your rip wrap is not going to stop the water from going downstream, which is going to, it's more CFM going downstream. So the gentleman next door that's got his walkway or his mafia blocks or whatever he's got down there is going to be washed away from the increase in CFM, no?
Again, the direction was to put it back to the condition what it was when there was two 60-inch CMPs there.
Whose direction was that?
Town engineering. What was presented to you in 2018 is that there would be a backup of water behind the roadway by the installation of these two slip lines, because they're smaller diameters. And that's what happens when you run the calculations, that's what happens. You can't have, you can't have both. It's either the water is backed up behind the road and driveway, and you have less going downstream, or you restore it to light conditions, and you have more going downstream, you don't have the backup.
So you're band-aiding a problem that we know is existing out there.
We're fixing the problem on the property, we're fixing it to what it was. There's some other problems downstream I'm aware of, and I think you have a violation later on your agenda.
Okay. All right. And I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny the cease and correct order of 2018.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept this plan that will satisfy the 2018 cease and correct order on 55 Kunderaki Lane, 55 LLC.
Okay. And I don't think this plan has a number or a date or anything, does it? Or what are we using associated with this? It's not an application, just using the 2018 cease and correct order?
The original date on the plan is April 14th of 2023, revised through November 30th of 2023.
Okay. So your motion will include that, that date of that map? And that, the date of that map being submitted was what again?
The prepared date is April 14th.
No, not the prepared date.
It's revised through November 30th.
How about to submit it? Has it been submitted to the town?
Yes, it's been submitted to the town.
And what was the submission date?
It was submitted last, the final version, after all the go-through, was last Friday.
December 1st.
December 1st.
12/1. Okay. There's a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made second. Any other discussion?
Is the language going to be in the motion?
What?
Is Phillips, is she cooperating with the final change? Yes, this plan is from December 1st of this year.
Okay, we're going to call for a vote.
Are we doing conditions?
What's matter?
Are you going to accept this plan with the conditions that...
Yes, with the conditions.
I didn't hear that part in the motion, did I, Debbie?
No.
No. Okay, because there's...
With the conditions recommended by Aaron, except the land use record.
There's the three, in my environmental planners report, there's the three from the town engineer, which are the three in italics, we're on page three. Oh, gosh, page three, one, yeah, page three. On page three of my environmental, there's the three conditions of approval that are in italics. Those are the three from the town engineer. And then I have three that I was suggesting. And then tonight, we talked about to specify the winter construction. Do we want, do we want to go ahead with winter to, or just whenever they want to do it is okay as well? Yeah, that's my last one, specify the season.
I think they're as interested in getting this done as anyone. So whether, whether to specify it's got to be done this winter or not, if it's specified before it's a CO, then it...
Okay, we don't have to do that. I do have one question for the engineer, though, if I may, just how...
No, not going there. We're going, we're talking about the, the conditions of approval. We got the conditions of approval from the, from the engineering department. And we've got your recommendations, which are on...
Same page, page three.
Can I make this one little recommendation?
No, hang on a minute, hang on a minute. Let's find the other set of recommendations here. Okay, is that page?
It's the bottom of page three.
Three, three and four?
Just three.
Well, three, and it spills over onto four, yeah. But you don't want to do the cease and, put it on the land records, I think we did.
Everything but filling on the land records, but that.
And if I may, I think what Jim Cassidy was going to say is, number two, Allison Kapusinski's number two has already been done. Was that what you were going to say?
No, what I was going to say is, where you say specify season, where the activity work is undertaken, maybe a way to handle this is put it during a low-flow period of the season, and that for some reason they need to go for financing, and they can't get financing this winter, it may be in the summer that this work needs to occur.
We just indicated it's got to be done by the time CO is.
That's right.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. I didn't hear...
The application must be completed, or the work must be completed by the time they get a CO from Town of Wallyford.
I, I'm sorry, I met with the law department today, and that's, I think, Dennis, I'm...
What's that?
I had a different understanding today. So we, unless something's changed since this afternoon.
What?
That it was before the billing permit was issued.
That's, no.
No, the billing permit, I don't think was realistic. That's what Planning and Zoning is recommending.
Oh, okay.
If they want to change... If they wanna change, if we're saying it's gotta be done before the CO, and planning and zoning says it's gotta be done before the building department, that's, or building permit, that's their issue with planning and zoning.
Oh, I see, okay.
Okay. So are we, are we straying down on these applica, on these permits, or conditions of approval? Engineering has three.
Two, doesn't?
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Number two?
Engineering's got three.
All right, just wanted to say, number two, I think has been satisfied. Jim Cassidy, can you tell me that number two is not...
It's submitted, I mean, if we had to provide another copy, it's fine.
Okay, what else you got?
No, then that's fine.
That's it. So now, your, your report has got, you have her report? And, well, there's something, where was the additional comment, stormwater management? Okay, this one's dead, that one's gone. All right, so you go ahead, that's the other three.
So redo the...
Well, there's, there's a motion made, and motion seconded, but we're gonna modify the motion made. It's the same motion, but going to specifically identify the conditions of approval.
All right, to modify the motion, the, I move to approve the plans with the conditions of approval being the town engineer's conditions, one, two, and three, that are on the environmental planners' report on page three, and additional conditions of stormwater management maintenance plan for culver crossing area to be submitted to include scour hole maintenance, number two, minimize grading on southeast slope above stream to the degree possible in order to allow treat root systems to retain slope integrity, and third, specify season in which work activities are to be undertaken.
One more, work must be completed.
Work must be completed before the CO is granted.
Okay, the motion got changed a little bit, is there a second?
Second.
Um, I'm sorry, there's one more that just, where it says specify season in which work activities are undertaken, I thought that would become, work to be completed in a low-flow season, isn't that...
No, it's, I think it's fine to where it is.
Okay.
Because you don't know what a low-flow season is until after the flow, after the season. Okay, all right. There was a, there was a bond discussed, but where are you going with planning and zoning on this?
Again, the public hearing is still open, I suspect that they're gonna wait for the report from this commission, that's what they've indicated, and if they deem a bond appropriate, I suspect they'll require it. Typically, we don't have a bond in each commission.
Not to throw a wrench into the fire here, but my understanding and my review of the planning and zoning meeting was that it wasn't a CO, it was a building permit, no activity or no work would be done on that site till this improvement was done in the driveway. So...
That wasn't a vote yet, that was, that was a suggestion from the chair.
Right. So how are you gonna change, us giving you a CO at the end, with approval with the CO versus actual building permit to go ahead and commence the work? How's that gonna work?
Well, I'm gonna try to be persuasive on Monday, December 11th, Mr. Kern. You know, again, I think if you saw the meeting, as it sounds like you did, the chairman understood our position, I think it's really draconian to require, with all due respect, and I like the chairman, he's a very good man, does a good job, but at the end of the day, you know, with all due respect, we're solving the problem that someone ignored for five years. We're coming in, we're trying to do a good job, we're spending an awful lot of money, and, and so the idea of saying, okay, but we're gonna make sure that you do it, even though no one did it for five years, now five and a half years, we're gonna put some extra onus on you, I don't know, it just seems unfair, that was my position.
Well, I think you're gonna deal with whichever condition is more stringent.
Exactly, if everyone's more restrictive, you're gonna comply with.
Now, I think you were told that we were looking for a $20,000 bond in a meeting or two ago, is that correct, Erin?
I don't recall that figure, no.
I don't remember, Mr. Chairman, to be fair, I don't.
The direction, I got some direction today on that, that the, we could bond it pertaining to erosion control.
But that's Planning and zoning's job.
No, I mean, erosion on either bank, they're gonna do...
That's Planning and zoning's job, erosion control, isn't it?
Yes, but we bond for erosion control, for wetland projects, you know, I'm talking about just for the banks, I'm not talking about up...
Are you offering a bond?
I think something appropriate, if it's just for, maybe a $5,000 bond.
About a 10.
I was thinking like, maybe $200,000 for this type of work.
That's Planning and zoning.
So $10,000 was better, perhaps, than your suggestion? I understand.
Another condition of approval is a $10,000 bond for primarily erosion control, is that correct, Erin?
Yes. I'd like to amend the motion to include a $10,000 bond for erosion control.
Second?
Second.
So we're back in. Okay. I'm gonna take, make a motion to, we're gonna vote on this, the motion's been made to correct the cease and correct order with this plan dated December 1st. It's been seconded, discussed, call for a vote, Nick?
No.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We have receipt of a new application to Five Research Parkway. It's not really, it doesn't have an application number, it's got a subdivision of the property. So I, I think that's what we're going to see, how they're gonna subdivide the property, and what effect it has on wetlands.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, for the record, my name is Dennis Sennaviva, I'm an attorney with the Sennaviva Law Firm, I represent the owner and applicant, to my left is Jeff Checkaway, the representative of the owner, and to his left is John Schmidt, our engineer from BL Companies. This matter, as you can, you've noted from the environmental planners' report, comes to you through the technicality of, of section eight dash twenty-six of the Connecticut General statutes, and I think it's 7.2 of your regulations. Before the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission, is an application by this client to, to re-subdivide the existing lot at Five Research Parkway. That lot is about 180 acres, you may recall, it's been here on a couple of occasions on full applications for activity. This is just a request that is in front of Planning and Zoning Commission to divide that 180 park, 180-acre parcel into two, two individual lots. The reason is that, and you may remember this when we came before you, but there is an existing building, it was a daycare along the westerly, kind of the mid-westerly border of the property, and there's some interest in the daycare, and so, my client would like to divide the property into two, they'd be properly sized lots under your zoning regulations, and again, we're there, I think, on Monday night, to the Planning and Zoning Commission for that approval. But there is a requirement under the statutes that says that if there is a re-subdivision of property, and involves a parcel that has wetlands or watercourses on it, that we have to come to this commission to tell you what we're doing. And again, in this instance, we're not doing any work, so this is not a new plan, there's nothing in front of this commission, as you point out, there's nothing in front of planning and zoning that suggests any activity. Whatever approvals have been obtained from this commission and planning zoning, they still remain. The only difference is, as you see from the plans that have been submitted to you, is we're gonna carve out a little over five-acre parcel with everyone's consent, and have that be a separate piece, it might be known as Seven Research Parkway, we think, and that would be the, the location of the existing daycare building. So it's just to separate out, from, from the wetlands perspective, your environmental planner has suggested that we have individuals, stormwater maintenance and management agreements, and so those have been submitted, and I'll defer to Jeff and John, but other than making certain that these, again, if they become two separate parcels, that there is some, some separate stormwater management for both parcels. There have been some easements because water drains over one, over one parcel to the other, those easements have been drafted and presented to your environmental planner. So I think she recommends approval of our request, but I'm gonna just defer to Jeff and John, just to go over some of the details of the specific subdivision or re-subdivision we're proposing.
Thank you, good evening, my name is John Schmidt, I'm a civil engineer with BL Companies, 355 Research Parkway, Mearon, Connecticut. I have boards of the same plans that you have in front of you, I'd be happy to review them, but basically what it is, we've done two main components of work, one is to create the subdivision map, to depict the smaller lot, Seven Research Parkway being subdivided out of the larger lot, and then the other main component is, is to revise the stormwater operations and management report. Now, the original stormwater operations management report was done, or operations and maintenance report was done for the overall project, that was approved, it's still valid. What we did was to break it out, separate it out, rather, so that Five Research Parkway and Seven would have separate reports, each one specific to the parcel. Again, the larger report is, is the same, it was just revised for the square footage, or rather, the acreage of the site has been changed, but with regards to Seven Research Parkway, it's a newer, modified O and M manual, and just is specific to that site only. So as a, for instance, the larger site has a dam, it has underground detention systems that need to be maintained, the smaller parcel does not have those items, so they're not listed in that management report. So that's really the idea, to split up the two so that they're specific to each site, and that's what we've done. I believe we just need to provide a final plan, a key plan that goes in with those reports, and that is the only outstanding item I'm aware of. I believe we have submitted all the other items that were requested, easement documents, everything else, we've met with staff, and I believe everything's been satisfied at this point.
Got some input, Erin?
Yes, I'd like to say just quickly about this section, by the way, the, got opinion from law department, we can go ahead with this, I know typically, applications go to the next month, however, there are no regulated activities being proposed here, and she says we can act tonight on this.
Well, if we're all set, then, we're all set to, to act on it?
Well, the environmental planners' report went out December 1st, there are a few, as you can see, under the condition, the recommendations, I recommend approval of this application and the submittals, with the condition that certain requested divisions, additional information be added to the final submental, we don't have to go, there are very minor, minor little tweaks we did, and the, the applicant was in agreement with all little minor changes.
But they're not on the map as we speak?
That's correct. There are minor, I don't wanna call them typos, but there are minor corrections to the key plan.
Missioners, any questions, Jimmy?
No questions, I, I don't really have any issues with it, I just find it interesting that the commission approved this parcel based on a feasible and prudent alternative that there was none, that there was no room for them to do anything on this, and yet, now we're going to be taking a piece of the valuable property that they had no room to wiggle on to make another subdivision. In light of it being what, two and a half, three percent of the entire parcel, it really is irrelevant, but just an interesting point.
The daycare center is on this parcel, and I'm guessing you have this parcel sold? It's not for sale?
Jeff Checkaway with Colair Properties, with the owner, I believe at the moment we're in the process of marketing.
Marketing, same program.
For sale, but it has not been sold to date.
Right. So, there's no construction going to be on this parcel as we speak?
Yet, we don't propose any, you know, new regulated activity or any activity at this time, we, you know, in order to transact on the property, it would need to be subdivided, so I think...
Jeff, any comments?
Do you plan on subdividing more?
We don't have any other plans at this time, other than this re-subdivision that's in front of you.
Mike, no questions? Debbie?
No question.
Nick?
Well, I always have a question.
That's what I can count on.
Because of the vicinity of both of these with the surrounding wetlands, and I'd like the wetland plaques to be in place around the areas, Erin, and also, I'd like, I'd also like to see on the land deed records that there's no, to be no construction, no additions or no add-ons, or not even on the daycare, increasing the size of the playground in the back, because you're already out into the wetland area. So just, I'd like to see something, I don't know if it has to be on the land deed, or what prevents, because it's off the road and we can't see it, and if nobody says anything, they're gonna be vulnerable to do whatever they want out there, I prefer to have, they know in advance that there's not gonna be any new construction before they come in front of us, or they don't have construction done.
Right, I know, I believe we can't prohibit improvements on the property, but you can say, by the way, on the plans, by the way, if you, you have to go before Wetland Commission with any improvements.
And where do you place that?
In our jurisdiction, which is fifty-foot area, not, not inside the building or anything like that, within the fifty feet of the wetlands and the, and the river.
Well, the map here shows them sitting right on the wetlands.
Yes, but I'm sure they can do things right around the building that doesn't involve us.
Earlier this evening, we went through a, a County Street and Beaumont Road, they're gonna change owners, the new owners are gonna say, well, I'm not gonna take care of any of the vegetation, so it just washed, washed away everything the last five years we put up with.
If I, may I, Mr. Kern, perhaps I can help with your legitimate concern? This is an invisible line, right, the subdivision, a re-subdivision is taking the 180 part, 180-acre parcel and dividing a piece out. It doesn't change your approvals, in other words, this five-acre parcel, if approved, would still be subject to your wetlands permit. Any activity that, that, if there's a new owner, if they wanted to add a square inch, they'd have to come back to this commission, because your approvals are very, very specific for the site when you granted them. I understand your concerns.
Where is this, where is this in writing?
It's on your, it's on your wetlands permit that you granted us, that gets recorded. But, but I'm fine to have a, I mean, that restriction's already there, and if you wanna reconfirm it, I'm happy to have that done. I wanted to give you some assurances, you've already, you guys and girls took a real good, you did a good job completing your analysis and review of the plans, and there's, there were a number of conditions, as you may recall, and they all have to be complied with, and one thing I remember very vividly is that if we made any changes, we'd have to come back to you. I understand.
When, if, when you do a title search on this property, and you pull up that it has a wetland permit, tonight's permit?
Right.
And in that wetland permit, it, it will say, granted a wetland permit with no future expansion?
It typically identifies the map and the conditions, so then you would naturally, then, you know, next go to the land use offices to talk to the planner, talk to the environmental planner, perhaps the zoning enforcement officer, get a municipal search as to, you know, all the approvals that are in place.
Well, it can be listed as a condition of approval, that no future expansion, or no future expansion without a wetland?
No, no future expansion without a wetlands approval. The only reason I bring this up is because on Research Parkway, the daycare that's up there, it's not, it's off of Research Parkway, we did intensive sidewalks on that property because they wanted to expand their playground, and that went right down into the wetlands, so I think we all have been out there and saw what they wanted to do, but we would have never known, they could have just gone ahead and expanded.
Understood.
Without, that's, well, it's somewhere it's written.
Ally?
Uh, no comment.
All set? Erin?
I'm all set, thank you.
Yes, Erin?
I just wanna point out for Commissioner Kern...
Just want to point out for Commissioner Kern's concern, the center of this five acres is out of our jurisdiction. It's just around the edges that really, so the center where the buildings and parking lot are, are not within the wetland jurisdiction area. So, you know, some of their applications would come before me. For instance, all, all building permits for pools and additions and decks come into my, I have to sign off on them. So I would get it that way, you know, if they were going to put a bump out the back of the building, it would come to me anyway, just to, for me to chuck off, it does need a wetland permit. That's how I, that's the reassurance. I think your idea about the placards is great, because they're not, the new owner hasn't lived through the last ten years of applications that we have on this one hundred and eighty, eighty piece of property. So I think that's a great idea, and, and maybe a note as a reminder, yes, that you, that wetlands should review this. They should be reviewed for wetland permitting if necessary.
All right. This doesn't need significant activity either because it's not a true application, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that application eight twenty-three dash eleven point one, Five Research Parkway, re-subdivision, two lots, be approved with three conditions. First thing, that the certain requested revisions and additional information be added to the final submittal. Number two, wetland placards placed. Number three, no future expansion without wetland approval.
We offset with conditions then?
Do we want to say where the wetland placards are going to be placed?
Subject to environmental planners.
I'd like to amend that. The wetland placards placed, subject to the environmental planners.
Location.
Locations.
Any other comments? Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Jeff, second. Call for a vote.
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Earlier than last night? You had a bad night. Never did last night, it was cold. Okay. All right. Moving on. Okay, Research Parkway, done. Fines for violation. Farm Hill, did we get notified, the people at Farm Hill?
No, not yet.
You got reports from the Kakyak Conference? Anybody?
Yes, I attended. They had a keynote speaker was James O'Donnell, a physical oceanographer, and he just talked about climate changes in Connecticut. And then I attended the legal update one. So one of the big things that the two lawyers pointed out, that you should put the notice of violations on the land records right away and not wait.
Yay.
I agree, yes.
You ready, Erin?
Yes.
Okay. We have, Erin sent out the proposed meet, excuse me, meeting schedule for two thousand twenty-four. Is everybody is okay with the meeting schedule?
Mm-hmm, yes. We approve, we approved it. I was just handing it out.
What?
We've already approved that. I was just handing it out for your files. That's okay, I'm sorry.
All right. Shouldn't even been on here then. Okay. Violations on Old Colony in Quinnipiac. That should be land records. I think you were working on that, under violations?
Yeah, that, that's, we approved that to be put on the land records, and the law department is working on it, yes.
Working on that. The cease and correct order remains for sixty-seven Schoolhouse. I kind of thought they might be here tonight. Can you check with her? Because I thought we had a deadline date with a, with a, an update. What was going on? Did we give them a year?
Yeah, we'll give them a year. We can refer, we can refer to the minute, the minute.
All right. Oh, here it is. Here, here. Deadline removal, nine four twenty-four. Very good, thank you.
Did, did that ever get added to the land record? Their, their violation?
I was going to wait until nine, nine four twenty-four to put it on the land record. Because I.
I've kind of been keeping an eye on Realtor.com to see when there's going to be a notice put up on that one that's for sale.
Well, I, I was in the middle of a, of a, overheard a conversation that contractor that they're working with has found somebody very local to the site to dispose of the fill. So that was going to bring down the cost considerably, and hopefully that'll make things happen a little better. So we'll go from there. Cease and desist, cease and correct order for Carl, Little K's. I don't think anything, I don't even know what's, what's going to happen with that. I thought you were dealing with legal department on that.
Yes.
And, and no report?
Not yet, no.
I'm sorry?
No, no report.
No report. Okay, notice of violation remains on twenty-four Maplewood. She's done nothing, doesn't want to talk to anybody.
Right. I'm, I'm not sure what you want me to do with that one.
Well, I, I think we should have a report on exactly where that stands. And depending on what the report says, and it, I don't know if the report's got to be, I don't know how much you can put on the land records, but I think there should be a, a notice on the land records of the problems at this site. Now, to what extent? I mean, it just goes on and on and on. I think they filled their property. I think the water always ran where it's running, and it's just been a problem. If she'd come in and done something different to begin with, I think everybody would have been happier out there. But at the moment, I think we want to get something on the land records because it just.
So.
If there's a new buyer on that house, it's going to be the same problem.
Are you suggesting you would vote next month, based on my report? You're going to vote next month to put on the land records?
I think so. Based on your report, I think I would vote next month about putting it on the land records.
Okay, so not tonight? Okay, so.
Not tonight. Okay. Notice of violation remains on one nineteen Quigley.
Right, I want to get that through the winter, see how it does, if the plants survive, but he's been very cooperative, so, yeah.
Notice of violation for Meller Road, Robert and Rhonda, Doolittle?
Yes, this notice violation went out in your packet, Robert and Rhonda, Doolittle. Yes, it went out in your packet Friday night.
So what does that mean?
The owner, unless he's changed, I don't know who's in the audience, but the owner said he could not, he was unavailable, he was out of state tonight. He can't be here, but he can be here on January third. He did come in and meet with me. We went over it. I gave him some pointers, what he might want to do between now and January third, meaning to get someone out there to assess what he's done from an engineering point of view, or just to, just to, so to provide you some summation with that. You might want to actually give some directives for, to me to gift him what you want him to come in on January third with.
How can you say what you want him to come in with? A plant to remove what he violations he has?
Well, what I was.
You've identified the violations, correct?
Yes, what I was thinking of is how structurally sound they are. They might have to be removed anyway. They might not be sound.
Well, I mean, you, you.
You talked about a sidewalk.
He, yes. I think a sidewalk would be good. You can view it from the point of view from Kendraki Lane. You can see into the property that way, but it was Mr. Doolittle himself who would like a sidewalk, if you feel so inclined. Of course, because there's a notice violation, you are welcome to walk it, go out there and look at it, but he said he'd be available in the middle of the month to walk it, December.
I just, that's fine, except you don't know what the weather's going to bring if there's going to be a few inches of snow, or if you would be to snow. Well, I think we'll just work through this. We'll see. If, if anybody wants to drive down there, I'm sure we're allowed on Kendraki. You can see it from Kendraki Lane. How about the driveway going into fifty-five?
No, you can't see Mr. Doolittle's driveway from that.
No, 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 no. Fifty-five Kendraki.
Yes.
Can you see the, the brook and the issues?
Yes.
From there?
Yes.
And from Kendraki Lane itself?
Well, you can't see much from Kendraki Lane itself.
But you can see it from the driveway, fifty-five.
Yeah, you can look right down. I was there this weekend.
I was there this morning, and I saw everything of Doolittle's, you could see, all the pipes coming out of the ground, the, the mafia blocks, the bridge.
The whole thing.
It's all visible there. You're not trespassing because they got a gate with lock up there. You can drive right on, on the, the property, and look right over the bank, and you can see everything you need to see.
I don't know if we need to know if he's filled wetlands. For instance, I, I know he's done stuff in the brook, Mr. Doolittle, but I don't know if he's filled any wetlands in the process. He's cleared vegetation, but I don't know if he brought in any fill, so maybe a wetland scientist should go poking around.
I think we need to document what's out there now, Erin, because when this third pipe goes in, I think it's going to open up a whole new scenario.
Right, I've done, I've taken extensive photographs of it from all different angles because I was, I was sensitive to what you just said. Like, we want to make sure of before and after conditions.
Well, I would say commissioners swing into fifty-five Kendraki and take a look. I think, my opinion is, if you look upstream from the, from the driveway, and you see what looks like a wetland surrounding the brook, and you'll find pretty much that probably was to the south side of the property of the driveway, that, that was a wetland also. Built, graded, bridge.
Thing that's unique, Jim, is that the water comes out of Kendraki Lane of fifty-five, it goes down by Mr. Doolittle's little island he's, he's made with a little wooden bridge, and then it takes a sharp ninety and goes another two hundred feet down, then takes another ninety, and it goes downstream. So that jag that's there is, is a potential, going to be a disaster. But it's interesting how the brook is, hasn't washed it away and made one straight course.
Yeah.
Don't usually like when ninety-degree bends.
I know, but you've got to see it to believe it.
It's, well, you have some aerial maps that you can access there, can't you? Can't you get a scenario map prior to that being built, which has to be seventy-five, maybe?
Yes, I included some in the environmental planners' report, but maybe I could get Google, like bigger, like blown up bigger.
Yeah, but that's, that's not pre.
Right.
Development. See if you can get an aerial, pre, pre-development.
It happened, I believe he said two thousand sixteen is when he, he actually told me he built it. Mr. Doolittle, I believe, told me he built the footbridge in two thousand sixteen, seventeen.
Well, see if you can get an aerial before that.
Oh, maybe before that, but, I mean, he's willing to talk about how he built it and when he built it. That's not a question.
If, if he filled the wetland, is he going to tell you he filled the wetland? Or is he going to tell you he just built the bridge? If you get an aerial photo, you can determine a little better what the condition of the land was before.
I can't see. I know what you're going for, Jim, here, but I can't see it. I've looked for it.
I have aerial photos that are dated from two thousand, oh, Amy Rupp, fifty-five Kendraki Lane, fifty-five LLC, also three twenty-four East Main Street.
What's the date on the aerial?
I have a two thousand four, a two thousand eight, and a two thousand sixteen of the exact same spot.
Are you, do you want to?
I have two copies, if you'd like them.
Well.
Rupp, R-A-U-P, as in Peter.
I would like to see him. Spring sixteen, spring eight, spring of four.
So there, there were other years available, but it's during the summer, so all the vegetation you can't see. So those were the best three years of progression, pre and post the footbridge.
So this, this is what you see out there now?
That's the same thing that you passed down the other direction.
So where's this, where's this house?
Here's the bridge.
That's the footbridge, yeah.
That's the footbridge that he built in two thousand sixteen. It's about there in two thousand.
Let's think of craziness. You want these copies back? You gave Erin a copy?
I wrote on her a little bit.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Anything else to come before us tonight? Not. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second. Second.